Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem. Oh, is that... Alderman Grover.
Here, thank you.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Eight to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, March 24th, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements and proclamations. National Public Health Week is April 7th through 13th, and Fair Housing Month is April. I have something to read from Alderman Tendem, who cannot be here tonight because he's taking care of his parents. Although I'm not able to be with you all in person this evening, I've asked the mayor to help me acknowledge a significant loss to the 6th Ward and the community as a whole. As many of you know, Reed Hagie passed away earlier this month. Reed grew up in the 6th Ward and lived here most of her life. Her father was an Evanston alderman, and until very recently Reed and her husband Joe lived on Lincoln Street in a beautiful home that her grandfather built for his family many years before. She was a good neighbor and someone that I was fortunate to be able to call a friend. But she was much more than that, too. She was a talented businesswoman, a tireless activist and volunteer, and an ambassador for many well-known Evanston organizations. Reed served as the president of the Childcare Center of Evanston and was a valued member of the Board of Mental Health, an organization founded by her mother Helen King Mitchell. Thanks in large part to Reed's leadership and vision, that organization flourished and grew to become what we now all know as the Mental Health Association of the North Shore. More recently Reed served as a trustee and member of the Advisory Board of the Mitchell Museum of the American Indian, a museum quite literally built around the important collection of Native American artifacts collected by her father, John Mitchell. To say that Reed was a force to be reckoned with would be an understatement, but she was always a force for good, and we are all better off for the time that she spent living and working among us. Our thoughts are with Reed's husband Joe, her son Mitch, her daughter Joan and Reed, and Joe's five grandchildren. A memorial service will be held Friday, March 28th, at 3:00 p.m. at Northminster Presbyterian Church, 2515 Central Park Avenue, Evanston. And I would like to add that Reed was a friend of mine, and I know of many of yours, and she will be greatly missed. That concludes my announcement. City manager, do you have a...
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. I'm happy to let you know that we received a call today from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and we have been awarded a grant through their 2014 Boat Access Area Development Grant. We received $200,000 from the state to construct an extension for the Church Street boat ramp to upgrade the facility and improve safety. So that's a project that we've been working on. So of the $715,000 that were granted statewide, we received $200,000 of that. So Stephanie Levine and Bob Dornaker and Joe McCray and our Parks Recreation Community Services Department, again, did an excellent job of tapping these little pots of money that IDNR comes out with every once in a while. So we're very excited about that. That should then allow us to have that project move forward this year. So the name of the grant is the 2014 Boat Access Area Development Grant, and it is funded by the fees that IDNR collects every year from marine motor fuel tax and boat and canoe registration fees statewide. So if you're renting a boater canoe or registering a boater canoe, you've just helped the city of Evanston. Other places like the city of Oldsby, the city of Galena, the city of Freeport, the Dixon Park District, and the village of M-A-C-H-E-S-N-Y, Macheney Park, I'm sorry?
Machesney Park.
Machesney Park in Winnebago County was the other big winner. They also received $200,000. So I'll forward this to the press corps, and so they'll have a copy of it, too. But again, more good news for the city of Evanston. That's all I have.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I do have one announcement. There will be a special township meeting tomorrow at 6:45 here in the council chambers. This has been requested by petitioners from electors of 41 signatures, so there'll be a 6:45 special township meeting tomorrow here in the council chamber. That's all for the night.
I will be out of town. Alderman Braithwaite.
Clerk Green, unfortunately, I'm unavailable. I have a prior commitment.
And as your happy township supervisor, I will tell you that none of our presence is required, that the town clerk will open the meeting. The issues that were raised are issues if the township initiative did not pass, which it did pass, so my sense is that it'll be a very short meeting.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Next is citizen comment, and the first three speakers are Carla Sutton, Priscilla Giles, and Junad Riske. You each have three minutes, and please give your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor. Madam Carla Sutton, 1821 Darrell Avenue, and at this time I allocate my minutes to Mr. Riske. Thank you.
My name is Priscilla Giles, and I live at 1829 Ashland Avenue. I'd like to give my time to Mr. Riske because he's more knowledgeable than I am.
No, not more knowledgeable on one topic here, that's all. Junad Riske, 2784 Sheridan Road. I want to thank Mr. Sutton and Ms. Giles for giving me the time. I think they share my concern about the water tank and the fact this could create a 20% water bill increase for the next 20 to 30 years on residents of this community. Tonight, I'm afraid we're moving in the direction of another Harley Clark, and that's the Evanston Water Tank. Statements have been made by certain public officials that we need a new water tank. The mayor went down to Springfield and met with the governor and the president of Northwestern University and discussed a new water tank. And no time to this council basically getting funds for a new water tank. So what I want to ask is, had this council never approved replacement of such a tank? This never was really discussed here in the council. The director of utilities first stated he wanted to replace the tank top for $3 to $5 million at one point in a Capitol meeting, and that's what he first started at. Later on, he came back and he started to talk about replacing the entire tank for $26 million at other meetings that came up later. Of course, this was never really discussed by council members. For those of you who are people who might have been aware of this issue, the city reservoir sits on Northwestern property. The city basically created a lease with Northwestern back in 1934 to lease this. This was not a free deal. The city vacated a public street for this, and at the same time abandoned a beach that it was leasing from Northwestern University that the public used. So this was not a free deal by any means to the taxpayers. Given Northwestern's recent announcements to build its $200 million-plus sports complex next to this reservoir, it does not appear to me and any other person of any kind of reasonable logic that Northwestern wants this tank there, even though they might say that. I want to know what private meetings may have been held with the city and Northwestern and what deals might be beginning to be cut. Some of us unfortunately remember other meetings, secret meetings and deals, that concern us. The Friends of Northwestern University might like to spin this that we hate Northwestern, or that those of us who have been involved in this seem to have some issue with Northwestern's tax status. The real issue here is, I don't feel any of us want to be giving Northwestern University a $26 or $28 million water tank that we don't need to do and move it. And what's very interesting, some might say Northwestern has no concern about this. Well, if Northwestern had no concern, the question is, why did they pay all this money to produce a report by Carl Walker Engineers on our water tank? It's quite a bit of cost here, which I realize many council members have not seen because it was not given to the public. But this is not a draft document, as Mr. Stonebeck said. There's not the words "draft" on this document. It is basically a final document from Northwestern to the city. So city officials know the document, and city officials know what's going on. And what the report says is, don't replace the water tank, fix the top, okay? And frankly, the city's own report that was done prior to this says the same thing, fix the top of the water tank. So two engineering reports done by competent structural engineers, and these firms are competent, by the way, and I'm not sure who in the city has the same credentials as any of these people, but these reports basically say, fix the top at the lowest-cost solution. They do not say replace the tank top. So why is the city wanting to go study all this? Mr. Bobkowitz came up here and told you, oh, we need all these studies. Well, you know what? These studies he's talking about are conceptual studies. They are not engineering studies. They are just very conceptual engineering reports. So, you know, he's just, this is basically a ploy to look at this water tank to be moved. It is not a ploy to do engineering. So, I mean, Mr. Bobkowitz, I think, he said that at AP&amp;W. So unfortunately, that is not real. And I guess what really bothers me is, who's really influencing professional judgment of city staff? Mr. Stonebeck's statement about future studies, as I said, does not make any sense. Why can't Mr. Stonebeck do these simple studies himself and present this to the council and save us $86,000? Because that's all these studies are. I mean, he talks about a three-foot level in the tank, and says that's a big problem. That's how most pumps work. You don't pump the whole thing out. So, I mean, there's a lot of nonsense here. And frankly, I think the city should be presenting these, going through these options before it goes out and hires a consultant to spend $86,000 of our money. Also, this issue of this new tank's increased capacity and new business, I think, is rather interesting. When we have no new business and we don't know what's going on, and the emergency issue, frankly, that's the other thing. Mr. Stonebeck at one point was talking about a 20% capacity increase in that tank was needed, and that was one of his statements. Well, what is 20% by? A couple hours of operation. So we're going to spend all this money for $26 million for a couple hours of operation. Now, he could tell you all this, so why hasn't he told you all this? And why aren't we discussing all this before we go out and spend $86,000 on a study? There's an unfortunate pattern here. I've been dealing with the city for many, many years, and is that if staff keeps going after a study, after a study, after a study, if they want something political done here? And obviously, this does not need to be done, and this is very clear. And this, I think, has to be, I think you really need to make Mr. Stonebeck accountable on this one. I believe the community will not accept one of the options in the study, and that is, look at Lee Park. While Alderman Grover tonight was saying, it's so far in the future, it's not an issue. Well, it is an issue. If frankly you're going to study it, it's an issue. You're wasting my tax dollars on a study that's so far in the future, it doesn't make any sense. So why are we studying it? I think really, the ward alderman doesn't want to talk to about residents? Well, I think it should be talked about because you're taking away a public park for possibly two years. The other, some of the other options there are not that feasible either. So replacing the tank top is the option for the taxpayers of Evanston. The other options are for Northwestern University. That's what the options are for. If you want to raise water bills 20% on people for 30 years, and whether you get money from the state or the federal government to do this, it's still our money, and people should be outraged at this type of thing. And the other issue in this is Northwestern also at one point was offering up long field as part of the study. It was basically an option, and that seems to have disappeared. So Northwestern just wants us to pay, whether it's the local taxpayers, the state taxpayers, or the federal taxpayers. Northwestern, with its billions of dollars of construction it's about to do, wants us to pay. Northwestern needs to pay to move the tank. That's the issue here, and I think many other residents of this community believe in that issue, that why should we pay? And finally, I think we need to look at this as another very troubling issue that I have. And that issue is, this water department should not be used for political purposes with our water bills. And basically, that's what's going on here. People do not care about the people of this community if they're going to use the water department for political purposes and not do real engineering and not do things that make sense, and that is a problem to me. And frankly, I've been pointing out for quite a while, an audit needs to be done of the city of Evanston Water Department. It's a fiscal mess. There are problems here. Nobody is willing to face up to it on this council, and you need to do that. The people have a right to know what the operation is doing, and there have been statements, it's in the CAFER. Well, there's nothing in the CAFER that'll tell you how it operates, and that's a very big issue. You have existing water contracts that are not very good, and you're pretending you're going to go add more contracts. 80% of the capacity of the plant is these existing contracts. So if it isn't working, how's it going to work in the future if you're going to spend all this capital? And I mean, frankly, we saw this at the city budget hearing. We saw the plan to raise water bills 30% over three years with more to come. So I think the people need an honest and decent, a really laid-out plan that makes some sense. And my final comment on all this, if you go ahead and do this, when this all comes out in the end, which some of you will be here, some of you won't be here, you know, don't be saying to people, you know, we didn't do this, we didn't know about it, we were not told, and people come here with pitchforks, quote-unquote, as you said before about some things. And I really think you have a chance now to say, look, if Northwestern wants that tank moved, they pay, we'll fix the tank top. Two studies have shown that. I mean, these engineering reports are here that show that. It's not that expensive, and anybody, and Mr., yes?
I'm...
All right, I'll finish with one last word. Mr. Lyons, your financial director, can clearly show the tank top replacement works financially over a $26 million repair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jerry... Next is Jerry Garl, Junad Riske, and Betty Esther.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks for letting me speak this evening. I am Jerry Garl, and I live at 1607 Dobson Street. Evanston is justifiably proud of its image as having a transparent government that engages its citizens who care about the future of our community. That image is challenged by actions like the application for funding of $395,000 for surveillance cameras, nearly twice the $200,000 that was authorized by this council in January, for the purpose of increasing safety to and from school, the high school. The city has already spent $60,000 installing cameras near ETHS on Dodge at the intersections of Dempster, Lake, and Church. My alderman has assured her ward residents that any additional cameras in our neighborhood would be installed only with the support of residents in the area, but the budget narrative included with the grant application specifies precisely where the cameras will be installed. The grant will add 22 additional sets of cameras, 12 of them on Dodge south of Dempster at the intersections of Crane, Greenleaf, Lee, Main, Washington, Cleveland, Keene, Oakton, Kirk, Mulford, Brummel, and Howard. Evanston's crime statistics do not justify placing cameras on these intersections. Is the goal of the project to ensure safe passage for ETHS students, or will deploying this intrusive technology lead to abuses like racial profiling? In cities across the country where neighborhood surveillance cameras have been installed, racial disparities in stops, searches, and arrests have increased. Is this really what we want for Evanston? So here are my questions. Did the city council authorize the expanded camera project, and who gave the final approval of the application before it was submitted? Is there still an opportunity for Evanston residents to have a voice in the placement of these cameras? Will there be any further public discussions about how the neighborhood surveillance program is going to operate, or any accountability to the public for the monitoring and use of the recorded images and the nature of the police responses? Before any additional cameras are installed in our neighborhoods, Evanston residents deserve more transparency about the decision to expand the camera project and a more responsive exchange with their elected officials on community safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is really another issue I want to discuss, and that's, when staff is making statements here, some of those statements do need to be questioned about, Mr. Stonebeck tonight was suggesting about toxicity and things like this, about the lining. I guarantee you, if you go get what they call the material data sheets for these chemicals, they're carcinogens probably. So frankly, if you go to court with a lawyer, you know, we have a lawyer, of course, he'll have to defend that if something happens. So I just wanted to leave that as part of your thoughts. I mean, you won't be able to defend it because you won't have, know what's going on with what happened. So that's just something I want to leave with this council. And one other thing, you know, I know Alderman Burris works for Northwestern University, and as far as this tank goes, probably be reclusive from any of the discussions as far as voting on this because it does impact Northwestern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Betty Esther. I stay at 2331 Church Street, zip code 60201. I want to thank all here and the viewing of audience for coming out to support keeping the Evanston Township. Now I ask you for your help to see that the transferring of programs and funds from the city, from the township, rather, to the city be a smooth and transparent one. Thank you. I will see you tomorrow night, March 25th, 2014, at 6:45 at the special town meeting here in the council. I also want to say, I agree with Mr. Riske's presentation on the moving of the water tank and the increasing of the water bill. Please be a little more clear, and every time we talk, if there was anything like the Crown, Robert Crown, presentation, it kept saying, we're going to increase the taxes, we're going to have to increase the taxes. Just be clear. That's all we ask. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Next on the agenda is a special order of business. City manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We wanted to give you a quick overview of how we ended the fiscal year. Mr. Lyons referred to a little bit of this during AMPW. We're going to hand out copies of the slides. I think Mr. Lyons, given the hour, will just do a general overview, and certainly we're prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Clerk Green, Manager Bobkowitz. As the city manager pointed out, this is our fourth quarter review, and we had a fairly dynamic fourth quarter, so our numbers changed quite a bit from what would have been our September 30th estimate that would have been in the final budget document. So I'm going to go through some of those changes. Before I do, really quickly, based on the previous comments tonight, I do also want to remind the council that the city's water fund is the part of the city that's still AAA rated by Moody's. So they did that analysis specifically for the water fund in October of 2013.
And Mr. Lyons, we're going to present this award at the next meeting, but also I think you're all aware that the Illinois chapter of the American Water Works Association had their inaugural award last week for the most outstanding water utility in the state of Illinois, and the city of Evanston won that award. So we are the first recipient of this sort of sweepstakes award for the water utility that is most modern, dealing with the most conservation efforts, most responsible to serving the needs of its community, and the city of Evanston won that award, and officers of the American Water Works Association will be with us at our next meeting to make that presentation.
So, moving forward onto the fourth quarter report, just in very much in summary, general fund revenues, this is what our report's going to be about, not a lot to report about in the other funds, but our revenues came in 2.4 million over budget. We projected them to be about just 0.4 million over budget. In the following slides, I'll explain some of the areas where that happened. Conversely, expenditures also came in over our estimate, and they would have just been barely over budget, 0.21%, but as a part of our budget review, we said we were going to be under budget, and let's move funds into our insurance fund, our fleet fund, and our capital. So I will go through these briefly. The thing to take away from this is, we had a $2.2 million surplus projected during the budget process based on expenses coming in under budget and revenues hitting budget. What happened was, revenues exceeded budget and expenditures hit the budget. So same result, $2.2 million surplus. So I'm going to jump right past this one and go straight into what happened. 97.7 for property taxes is actually good. We've had 95 and 96 percents in the last few years due to lack of payment. Sales tax, this was a great sign that our basic sales tax, 7.1%, so that's not car dealerships, that's our basic retail mix that we pride ourselves on. So that's a very important sign of recovery for the city. Athletic contest taxes, I think you've all seen the email that went around, this is our highest result in a long time, if not ever. I went conservative, so when this was put forward. And then parking tax revenues...
Excuse me, Mr. Lyons, Alderman Grover, then Alderman Rainey.
Mr. Lyons, I talked to whoever it is who remits the check to you for the ticket tax, who said, and he's been here many longer than 10 years, says the highest revenue amount ever.
It would make sense, since ticket prices go up, and they had a banner year for attendance.
And attendance has gone up.
And we had the extra game. All those came together. So other things that helped us out, you had a...
Oh, and Alderman Rainey. Okay.
State income tax, also rebounding. We're now at 7.2 million. That's about where we were before, pre-recession, so we've almost gotten back to that. It took quite a bit to get us there. As we discussed during budget session, we thought the real estate transfer tax would rebound. It certainly did, 81.5% above budget, and so Alderman Rainey is just saying...
Go right ahead.
The point I want to make is not to, you know, exclaim about it being 81.5% over budget, which speaks for itself, but I think the time has come where we not add the sentence, this includes large property sales. Since the day we began talking about imposing a real estate transfer tax, large property sales were always part of the revenue generated. There is no reason to, there's a reason to single them out when we get the report, so we can see that something, you know, costing $50 million sold, or $140 million sold, that's very interesting information. But to modify the fact that it was 81.5% over, by adding this includes large property sales, of course. It's not unusual that large property sales are included. They've always been included in the real estate transfer tax. So I think, I think we should just sort of drop that. I know, you know, and they're not one-time revenues. They're not one-time revenues. They're consistent in our real estate sales in the city of Evanston. When things are selling, big buildings sell, and so, you know, that's all. I've always had a thing about that, so I just want to keep saying...
I will remove that.
...if somebody else agrees with... Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Moving on, as I think many have also been aware, we had a large Northwestern project come in at the end of the year. We also had several other projects come in that drove our building permit fees up to the level they are, 12.8% above budget. You can see the biggest part of that is the building permit revenue themselves, which is 35% above budget, and we did increase both the building permit revenue and the transfer tax substantially in the 2014 budget.
What did, what did we put for the real estate transfer tax in 2014?
I will have to take a quick look. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I think we are close to four, but I will check. So this is just a summary. Don't need to go through that again. If anyone has any questions specifically regarding it, let me know. So the other, this slide, I think, was important to get a quick look. Council, please take a look at this as far as, what does the actual mean compared to what we projected? So we're projecting about a 2.7% increase above what we actually had. So given our current state of the economy, I think we will be able to make this number, especially we've had good building permit results at the start. We've already been receiving property taxes. The county has continued. The county has continued with what I would call a very timely release of bills. So, we get property tax revenues in. So, good signs for 2014. Certainly timely, given what happened in January, February on our expense side, that we're going to have strong revenues. So, on the expenditure side, 100.2 percent. So, that's 100.2 percent prior to our $2 million in transfers that we recommended.
Excuse me, Marty Alderman Braithwaite has a question.
One slide. Can you give me a breakdown of what's included in our intergovernmental revenues, please?
I will have to pull that one. That includes several sources, including some of our grants.
Okay.
So, but that, so it can go up and down substantially.
Grants?
Right.
Okay.
All right. So, what happened on our expenditure side? This graphic is a summary, and I will go to the specifics. The big issue in the police department, as you're all aware, we had a lot of activity. We had a lot of overtime associated with that activity. So, that shows up here in the police department. Public works, the same can be said. We had a lot of overtime activity in the, at the end of the year. So, the way it's worked out, we were still at 100.2 percent. Administrative services, didn't have as much an unemployment compensation. We also had, in the city manager's office, we did not use the contingency. So, those, the lack of using those expenditures helps support the other departments when they do exceed budget. So, again, $2.2 million surplus. The recommendation still stands as it was put in the adopted budget when we also reviewed the estimated budget for 2013 and what to do with additional funds. The short of it is, at the bottom, we're at $17,860,000 as our fund balance in the general fund, and we were at $17,101,000 prior. So, we're still right on the number for our reserves. This allows us to transfer the $1 million into the debt service. I misspoke earlier when I said capital. The $1 million is the transfer we use to keep the property tax flat. So, that was, instead of raising the debt service levy, this transfer allows us to keep that, that increase out of the tax levy, and our, we believe will have a small increase next year on the debt service. So, any questions? Anybody that needs a reminder of the fleet fund? Alderman Grover had a question. That was also to have that fleet fund not be in the negative. And finally, the insurance fund, which still has that $6 million plus negative balance, that is for claims payable. And as you know from all of our executive sessions, we've been doing a very, very good job in neutralizing those claims payable. So, that's been a great thing. We don't get to take them off our books until the end of the year. And it always seems we end up with another one taking its place that needs to be reserved. I will point out in the report that the negative balance is decreasing, and we have another plan to reduce it even further during the year in 2014. So, we always provide this slide. Just very briefly, parking fund did fine. The expenses were higher than budget, but so were the revenues. Water fund, capital projects were deferred. That's why you had the 80.9 million, I'm sorry, 80.9 percent on the expense side. We didn't do anything different on the operating side for the water fund. The sewer fund came in right at budget. We had a very active capital program. And we also, 2013 and 2014 are our last big years for the IEPA debt. So, we had close to 13 and a half, 14 million in debt payments in the sewer fund in 2013. Call your attention to solid waste. Once again, we're running so far, even though we started this fund off at a deficit, the public works department has been able to run it at a surplus each year. So, as we'll know a little bit later, the deficit's down to just over $1 million in this fund, the negative fund balance. It started off above a negative 1.5 million. So, through some good operating decisions, we've been able to just eat away at that negative balance without additional funds going into it. I think I just summarized those, and those as well. The capital, that doesn't include our encumbered funds, so we spent, are encumbered, a lot more than the 22 million that's showing there. And Alderman Grover, I just want to make sure that we address that question. So, this was the slide to address that question. And see, we went, we're from $7.35 million negative balance down to 6.6. We hope to take it down even further. The effective general fund net balance at $9 million is still above our minimum. Our minimum is 8.3 percent, which would be about $7 million. So, again, I'd be more concerned if it wasn't for the fact that, that 6.6 million is not a hard dollar number. Those are reserved for claims payable that may or may not happen. That's enough?
Mr. Lyons.
I would like to just then tie it into the amendment. So, that is on the agenda as well. So, if you wish to do that.
And I just want to mention that the real estate transfer tax is budgeted at $3,450,000 for '14. Quickly tie it into the resolution, and we'll be done.
So, as noted here, we still have the $2.2 million surplus. The retroactive budget amendments that's on the council's agenda raises the expense side in the general fund budget high enough to allow for that transfer, but does not negatively impact the general fund's fund balance. This is actually more in line with the city's budget policy, that if, you know, if there are additional funds in the general fund, it should go to capital or our other types of funds, rather than stay in the general fund.
Thank you very much.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, just to add, I'm going to have to throw some, some snow on top of this other happy report. We'll be back to the council next week with our, what we think will be the final snow number. It's significant. We're also coming back to you with a plan for street improvements. So, we have all of the street improvements already budgeted. We believe there is quite a bit of additional work that needs to be done. So, we are going to bring back to you the dollar amount for that, and get, get your approval to move forward now. We want to be able to contract with outside vendors to begin the resurfacing process of some of the more difficult areas. This is above and beyond everything that's already been budgeted. So, that, plus the overages for snow are significant. We don't think insurmountable as far as our budget issues are, but they're certainly significant. And we'll be sharing that all with you next week.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of March 10. The administration and public works committee met this evening and ask your approval of the payroll, $2,702,907.62. This is through March 9. The bills from the city through March 25, $2,513,982.69. We ask your approval to authorize the manager to execute a contract for the 2014 cured and placed spot line sewer rehabilitation with CTR Systems in the amount of $48,114. We ask your approval also of, to authorize the manager to execute a contract for the 2014 cured and placed pipelining contract A with Insitia Form Technologies, USA LLC, in the amount of $318,989.40. Approval is also requested to execute an agreement for the reservoir and clear well planning study with CDM Smith in the not to exceed amount of $86,359.
Alderman Rainey, could you remove that, please?
I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, take off. A 3.4. We ask your approval to authorize the manager to execute a renewal of the annual sole source maintenance and support agreement for the term March 1, 2014 through February 28, 2015, with Harris Computer Systems for Harris North Star Utility Billing Software in the amount of $42,698.96. Your approval is also requested for the purchase of two replacement vehicles for the utilities department in the amount of $167,808 with Curry Motors in, for, let's see, Curry Motors, in the amount of $34,511. And from Rush Truck Center, in the amount of $133,297. Sorry about that. The council approval is also requested for the purchase of eight police vehicles for the total amount of $212,104, also from Curry Motors. We ask that you approve the manager executing a one-year contract renewal for the purchase of emergency lighting, sirens, and aftermarket products and services in the amount of $68,973.60 with Havy Communications, Inc. Havy has agreed to hold their recent, their present pricing terms and conditions for 2014. We ask your approval to authorize the manager to execute a one-year contract extension with Ozinga Ready Mix Concrete in, for a total amount of $64,000 for the 2014 purchase of concrete. The funding is divided among the street and alley maintenance, the water fund, and the sewer fund. We ask your approval to authorize the manager to execute an agreement for engineering services in the Central Street Improvement Project in the amount of $297,950 with Infrastructure Engineering, Inc. This is from, funding is from the Capital Improvement Plan, the Central Street Sidewalk Project, and Pedestrian Safety Improvements Projects. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to execute the construction contract for the 2014 Motor Fuel Tax Street Resurfacing Project with Chicago Land Paving in the amount of $1,119,900. Approval is also requested for additional funding of $24,953.95 to the Illinois Department of Transportation for the local share of the Safe Route to School Sidewalk Replacement and Curve Extension Project. The lowest qualified bid for the project is $274,815.95, which is $24,953.95 over the previously authorized funding level. The funding will come from the CIP Neighborhood Traffic Commuting Project, Pro Project. The city manager, we request that you authorize city manager to execute change order number two for the SCADA system upgrades with Allen Integrated Control Systems. The final charge, the final change order will decrease the total value of the contract by $17,012.77 from $1,649,642 to $1,632,629.23, and increase the total contract time by 335 days. We ask your approval, and staff does as well, to adopt Resolution 17R14, which we just discussed, authorizing the manager to increase the total fiscal year 2013 appropriation by $2,278,752 to a new total of $256,214.8. We ask your, this is off the consent agenda, the approval of the Historic Preservation Agency grant. Next is approval of the 2014 Special Events Calendar. We ask your approval, contention upon compliance with all requirements is set forth in the Special Events Policy and Guidelines. This year's calendar includes four new proposed events, two of which are low-impact events that involve use of the lakefront path. Costs for city services provided for events require 100% reimbursement from the sponsoring organization or event coordinator. The Planning and Development Committee met this evening and requests your approval, along with the Zoning Board of Appeals and city staff, to adopt Ordinance 36014, granting a special use permit for commercial indoor recreation and a drive-through facility for Little Beans Cafe at 430 Asbury Avenue, commonly known as Asbury and Oakton. The applicant has complied with all the zoning requirements and meets all of the standards for a special use in the B2 Business District. The committee also discussed moving suspension of the rules, and therefore, in addition to introducing this, I am moving suspension of the rules, and the matter will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 32014, the plant commission and city staff recommend adoption of Ordinance 32014, granting a planned development approval to construct a nine-story mixed-use commercial office and residential building at the southeast corner of Chicago Avenue and Main Street, commonly known as 835 Chicago Avenue. Madam Mayor, I move introduction, and I believe the committee chair will discuss returning this to committee. The Housing and Community Development Act Committee, along with staff, recommend approval of the 2013 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, commonly known as the CAPR. The CAPR must be submitted to the Chicago Field Office of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development by March 31, and should mention that the 2013 receipts from HUD totaled $2,347,43, and Community Development Block Grant was $1,668,544. The Home Investment Partnership Grant was $250,418, and the Emergency Solutions Grant totaled $115,781. Madam Mayor has made the following appointments for our consideration. The Commission on Aging, she's recommending Catherine O'Brien. Parks and Recreation Board, David Campbell. Downtown Performing Arts Center Task Force, Michael Core as a representative of the Evanston Chamber. Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Verris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. The consent agenda is passed. Alderman Rainey, Administration and Public Works, please.
Just give me a second. I didn't mark these for...
A 33.
A 33 is the first one. Right. I'm looking for A 33. Here it is. Madam Mayor, I move for approval the, the agreement to execute, to execute an agreement with the reservoir and clear well planning study with CDM Smith in the not to exceed amount of $86,359.
Second.
There was a lot of discussion in committee about this.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the discussion at AMPW tonight, but I was very interested and actually concerned about what Mr. Ritzky said about a, apparently a draft study from Northwestern University about the condition of the reservoir and the roof. And I have not seen that. I don't know whether anyone else in the council has seen that or not, but I have not seen it. And I don't feel comfortable making a decision about spending this money until I do. So, I'm going to move to hold it over.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to hold it. So, I think that's automatic.
It is.
So, that's...
Well, we'll make copies available. Again, this is, this is a second study. We had done our own study. We've done some additional studies. What we're trying to do is make sure that the council has all the information they need, and we need to make decisions to move forward. So, we believe that the additional work is necessary. We're concerned about the findings that... We're concerned about the, the findings that we've had on the roof. We don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish with this. You know, the university has let us know that the construction of the new facility is in no way going to encroach on the, the footprint, so that is immaterial to the decision-making. But as we move forward, we do not have the luxury to have that facility either cave in on the top from the roof or from the sides. So, we want to be able to make sure that the council has as much information as possible when making capital budget decisions going forward.
And that's the purpose of the hold, so that we can have all the information in front of us.
Well, but unfortunately, Alderman Fisk, you won't, because.
We can have this piece of information. And is it appropriate to be discussing after we've held?
Again, just trying to provide context.
I think one of the things that made me accept this contract as something that I would vote on is that it was explained to us that the issues that Mr. Ritzky raised would be addressed in this study. So that's, that was.
No, I understand. And I think, but I think that this piece of information is important, too, so.
Alderman Rainey, does that conclude AMPWA?
No, no, I have one more. But we're, are we, what are we going to do with this issue?
It's been held.
You held it, okay. I'm sorry. No, and I have, I, I have an issue with one here. Item A6, I'm going to move approval of authorizing the city manager to sign a grant agreement for $53,200 with the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency to inventory and record with the Cook County Recorder of Deeds designated Evanston Landmarks located outside local Evanston Historic Districts. The grant is $37,240 to be reimbursed to the city and a city's match of $15,960. Staff has revisited the city contribution and was able to decrease the city's financial expenditure to $3,990 with the, the balance of the previous number contributed to by volunteers and staff time. I move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey, did you wish to speak to it?
Madam Mayor, I think this is like killing a flea with, you know, sledgehammer. This, one person, as far as I know, I remember somebody maybe 10 years ago at the corner of Hinman and Main Street coming forward who made a mistake with their windows, saying they didn't know. But I, I think this is just over the top, and I read very carefully Mary Bruglier's letter, and I consider her one of the city's top experts in preservation, and she discouraged approving this grant. So I am looking to our experts, and I, I feel that this is just over the top. So I'm voting against it. That's why I kept it off the agenda.
Thank you. Does anyone else want further discussion? City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Seven to one.
Seven to one. The motion passes. I believe that concludes AMPW. No, does not conclude. All right, who's in charge? Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item is P1, Ordinance 36014, granting a special use for commercial indoor recreation and a drive-through facility, Little Beans Cafe at 430 Asbury Avenue. We move, I move to suspend the rules.
Is our rule suspended?
We did suspend them.
Then I, I move approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 36014, granting a special use for commercial indoor recreation and a drive-through facility, Little Beans Cafe at 430 Asbury Avenue. City Clerk, seeing no one wishes to discuss it further, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. The motion passes. Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, Madam Mayor. With, with respect to item P2, this is the ordinance granting a special use for a plan development at 835 Chicago Avenue, Chicago and Main. We had a great deal of discussion at PND, and the committee has moved to introduce here at the council, and we'd like to refer it back to the committee for further discussion. And the next time that, that the majority of us on the PND committee will be present is the April 28 meeting.
All right. Thank you. Do we need to vote on introduction, Madam Mayor? Oh, we didn't introduce it?
No, it was introduced.
We did it?
Yeah.
Thank you. I thought we had, but. All right, that concludes your report, Alderman Nguyen. All right, congratulations, everyone. We're at call of the wards. Alderman Burrus.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick reminder to second ward residents that this Thursday, March 27, myself and I invited Alderman Wilson to attend a community meeting to discuss the redesign process for Penny Park. I'm inviting any Evanstonian who remembers the magic that was created over 20 years ago, or who has an interest in hearing more about the park design to please attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Thank you. And Alderman Holmes?
No report.
Thank you. And Alderman Tendem is out of town. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've noticed, as many of you probably have, that as our Evanston Glacier is retreating, that it leaves behind quite a bit of litter, and perhaps we can spend some time. And I think it'll probably be a couple weeks before lawn crews and residents get out to do their own cleanup, or that our city crews are able to do street sweeping. So if residents could help us with picking up. I also learned today that all those yard signs, the corrugated plastic yard signs are indeed recyclable, as are the metal posts that hold them up. So send out your.
Battle posts are?
The metal, the metal brackets are recyclable.
Thank you.
So all of those yard signs, those Class V corrugated plastic yard signs and their metal stakes can be put in the recycling containers for recycling.
Thank you for that information. Alderman Rainey?
First of all, happy birthday to Alderman Fisk. Congratulations to the peckish pig, the longest-running grand opening in history of any restaurant. And it's not over yet.
No.
April 3, the mayor will come and cut the ribbon, the official ribbon cutting. So be there, or, you know. And my former colleague and wonderful, dear best friend, Anjana Hansen, won her primary election, overwhelmingly won her primary election, which, from the annals of Democratic Party history, indicate that she will indeed be a Ninth Sub Circuit Court Judge in whenever the next November election. So congratulations to her.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
You're welcome.
Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for it?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C1, C11, and C21.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.